Township meeting in order, please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We dodged the rain so far and the heat, too. It's supposed to get hot for a few days. Okay, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Borey.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Absent excuse.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
All right, uh, next we have a public hearing for our township budget.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:02 PM.
Support.
Okay, a motion to support opening up a public hearing for the budget, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's time to open up the public hearing. Uh, we have a public hearing for our township budget. Do we have any public that would like to comment on our budget? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:03 PM.
Okay, a motion to support, any, um...
Discussion?
Thank you.
None.
None. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have bills payable, I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $94,779.86.
Okay, we have motion to support, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our supervisors' report. Just like to report happily that our Frag Mities program is back in full swing. We were able to secure chemicals, of course, they went up quite a bit, but nonetheless, we secured the chemicals and so we don't have to go out and buy some water buffalo, eat the frags. And so if anybody's interested in getting involved in Frag Mities program, call our billing department, Cindy Babish. Historically, as water goes down, frags like low water, you know, we're gonna get more frags, so... And our program would get busier with the lower water, so call our billing department if you're interested in treating some frags. Uh, still doing as always with a lot of building and blade issues. We got tall grass, high grass, people, please cut your grass. We have a weed ordinance, a grass ordinance. And I know we sent out a whole plethora of letters to people last week and a half, two weeks, and we don't want to be in the grass cutting business at all. And, but if we're forced to, we're gonna come cut your grass and you're gonna... It's not cheap either. So just please cut your grass. And, uh, well, this is, I wrote this last year, we finished up the budget. It was tight, it was, it was, it was, it was hard, it was challenging this year, all the inflation and who knows what's happening in the future. And basically got rid of all, all the fluff we could and no new projects. We're finishing up projects we have in motion, but like I told the board, it's time to circle our wagons, which, you know, we did. And so I believe it's a, it's a good budget, but it's tight. Uh, let's see, I do have a meeting set up this week with a new contact that I have with Comcast, and we're not only going to be talking about broadband in the township where we don't have it, but also bringing in fiber cable into the township and certain roads and areas, so... Trying to get a comprehensive plan together with them. And we had a wastewater treatment plant meeting where we approved, it was in the budget. We approved the purchase of a 300 KW backup generator. It came in actually below what we thought, it's still a lot of money, but the generator, I think we, the winning bid with Wolverine, came in $106,000. And then the switch panel that needs to be replaced, that's at $87,000. And we're getting quotes right now for the installation. We did have $300,000 budget for the project. So you guys are all well aware, Joe Char wants to do a special assessment for their, repave their private road. And down at the end, there's a real bad dip in it, if you go right to the end. And our sewer main runs right in the middle of their road. And so I asked our, our engineer if we need to address anything with that, and they said, yeah. Where the big dip is, it's actually an old ditch or a canal that used to run through there. And they think that there's still water, like an underground river running under there. And it put a big dip in our sewer main, and they're suggesting that we replace about 80 feet or so of that with a self-supporting sewer main. I asked them to come up with a plan and estimate so we can put that out to bid. We don't want to have to rip out our road to fix a sewer after they just replaced it. So you gotta get all that under, underground work done beforehand. Just wanted to let the board know that I've requested the engineering done to put it out for a bid. And then also on that special assessment we have going on on North Channel West, where they fixed the big tube and repaved the road, it was two different parts. I was down there actually yesterday, and it looks fairly done. I think they may have a little bit of shoulder work to do. But the, the, the part where the tube is, it's smoothed out, it came out nice, they got nice gabion rock baskets on the sides. And I'm not sure how much asphalt they put on there, it looked like a good three, four inches. And it's down all the way to the end. Like I say, there, there might be some, a little bit of shoulder work that needs to be done. They could have done it today, I'm not sure. Pickleballs, we're getting a lot of play on our pickleball nets in the park, I don't know if you noticed that. And we put a couple pickleball nets in a, an old dock box out there and everything, so it's getting, I'm glad it's getting a lot of, a lot of use. The county parks and rec, uh, public information, uh, public information hearing for the beach park. Supposed to be last Tuesday, I believe that's been postponed. Music in the parks going strong. We had three concerts so far in Elginak and one on Harson's Island this last Friday. It's going real well, we got a lot of good bands. Uh, let's see, June 23rd, this one, we have, this Thursday, we have Detroit Social Club. And then we skip a week for the Pickleball Tournament, July 7th, we have the Melvin Brothers, and it moves here in Clay Township, where we have the Gobies, the Detroit Blues Band with Jimmy McCarty, Tim Beach Drive, Lisa Mary, and ends up with Lost Gringos, so got a lot of good music lined up. Good job, Cindy Babish. Uh, the cleanup was last weekend. I'm not sure how many dumpsters we got total count, but we're busy, both on the mainland and the island. And trying to get a fall date lined up. I was shooting for October to have one in the fall, but MTA has a hard time, would have a hard time supplying us with all the cans. I'm working with MTA for a September date along with Elginak, it works good. They, they're willing to do a, a second date, too, have them do it at the same time. Because without them doing it, we would get, always get trash from Elginak, you know, just how it is. But it worked out well having them in conjunction with us this time. Let's see, found a possible grant that we're looking into for some outside exercise equipment along our walking path. I'm not sure what we're gonna ask for yet, between $100 and $150,000. We'll see. And I did want to mention, too, right now I'm on the Harson's Island Nature Park. We're negotiating with Eagle on developing that park. And right now, they don't want us, or they're not allowing us to do the walking path. And so I bumped it up a couple levels, see if I can get that reversed or, or if we can change it at all, if they'll work with us. So I'm not sure, they said that our, our walking paths would, would disrupt the wildlife there. Oh, yeah, also wanted to mention, I got notes all over. Uh, we were talking about in our budget workshop, George at the fire department, we were gonna sell the one truck that's, I don't know, that's like 12 years old that he has, we were hoping to get $20,000, $25,000, well, we sold it for 40 grand. Did we do it today? I, I, it's a...
I, I missed the morning, so I don't know if they did this morning or not.
Yeah, we got the paperwork and that's in the, in motion, so...
But sending it to a general auction, we would have definitely got 20 or 25, but he was lucky enough to find a fire department that was in need, so...
Yeah, it's, we got, it's actually going to a fire department in Louisiana.
That's good.
Yep, uh, let's see, the DDA is paying to crack, fill the cracks and reseal the walkways in the parking lot in our park next door. He's been working on it, it's been a challenge trying to keep people off of it while he's sealing it. And this past boat ride, we, I participated in Boats for Vets, it's called, where we give a bunch of veterans boat rides for the day and then a nice lunch afterwards. It's an awesome event. And I have a buddy of mine allowed me to take his antique yacht out in it. And in total, they had about 175 people between the captains and all the vets. And it, it was very good. I, on my boat, I had people from the Korean War, we had one gentleman from World War II. And, uh, but every, boy, there was a lot of smiles on that event. It, that's a nice event. This next weekend is the Antique Boat Show at the Elginak Harbor Club, then on our, our world famous unsanctioned event called Jobby Noonner. Got lots of Parks and Recs activity going on, and we're in the thick of it. I did mention before that meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday is the Summer Solstice, and Wapla Island always has fireworks over during that, so... There's my supervisors' report. All right. Uh, next we move into public comments, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes from the board meeting of 6:06:22, special board meeting 6:08:22, special board meeting 6:16:22, which were our budget workshops, the reports for the check reports, and the road watch the week of June 20th, 2022.
Support.
Okay, a motion to support on the consent agenda is presented, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, we got a motion to support.
Yep.
Oh, boy, long day. All right, uh, any discussion, no discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on our new business, we have first, Resolution 2022-06, zoning ordinance map amendment.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-06 for the map amendment for parcel 7414057002 and 003, from R1 to C3.
This is the property down here, it's old Doc Caspero's property. So, and it went before our planning commission, right, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
And then it went to the St. Clair County, and they approved it, now it's before us.
Is this on the mainland?
On what?
On the island, this is on the mainland.
Yeah, it's, it's on the mainland.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Actually, it changed from commercial to R1. No, excuse me, R1 to...
R1 to commercial in the front.
And it was in the master plan already?
Yep, and they're trying to sell it, and like I said, everybody thought it was a good idea to allow this, so... Any discussion for a call of vote? Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have invoice for Parks and Rec for Detroit Lions tickets. This is to buy tickets, so Cindy does this every year. And then she sells them for, and gets a bus and sell them and go down and watch the Lions tackle the Seattle Seahawks. What day is this on? October 2nd. So this will allow her to go ahead and grab the tickets, and then we resell them, and they go quick, it's a sell-out every year. And it's a fun time, I've done it myself a few times, so...
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Detroit Lions group invoice, um, writing from account 461255, amount of $37.95.
Okay, a motion to support, any discussion about our Lions? Hope they'll do better than, they'll do better than the Tigers. There's a lot of optimism out there.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, we really do have an easy time selling them.
I know, they do.
It does.
We do.
Honestly, I think, I think the, the group is so big, they kind of jump on it, and I'm not sure that if you weren't in that original group, that you could probably even squeak in, maybe.
Maybe.
They have a lot of fun.
It, uh, it's, no, it's, it's a fun time, and truthfully, I think the Lions are gonna be a little better, I hope.
What's the date for the game again?
October 2nd.
You know, these are recorded.
What? Yeah, I know, I know, they're recorded. Go Lions. Go Michigan State. All right, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2022-07, Clay Township General Appropriations Act.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 22-07, the Clay Township General Appropriations Act.
We have support?
Support.
So, just so you know, I mean, normally we just pass a resolution that just lists all of our numbers, and if you recall, when the auditors were in, they wanted to see something a little bit more detailed. So this was taken from the MTA, and we just filled in our numbers.
And we all went over these in two meetings, so...
These were taken right from the budget workshop numbers.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the MTA membership, uh, bill. And I don't know about you, but I believe we get a big bang from our buck by being involved in them, with them. Uh, it goes by your size of your, um, your township. And our total is $6,852.61. And we do have it spread out amongst our divisions in our budget.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the MTA membership 2022, 2023 in the amount of $6,852.61.
Okay, a motion to support, any discussion?
I think they're very helpful.
Go support to that, Chris.
Yeah, they, uh, it's a great networking thing, and usually everybody that's, or things that we're going through, everybody, you know, other townships already done it, it's, uh, it's a good learning tool also. Any more discussion? All in favor of renewing the MTA membership renewal is signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is our assessor's contract renewal, Sherri Lawton. Said before, I believe she's doing a great job, she was one of the few to, every year, or not every year, it's like every three or four years, we do an AMAR audit, and where the state comes in and beats you up. She got 100%, and that doesn't happen very often, especially in a township this big with this size, so...
Board, I'll propose a motion to support the Sherri Lawton Clay Township Assessor's Contract.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion?
I'm glad we have her.
Me, too. Me, too. And we're gonna keep her, hopefully.
Well, this, this helps, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Guess it was good that you waited and approved the first one, because these numbers are a little bit higher. After we did the budget workshop, so it's good.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Yay. And next we have Resolution 2022-08, set the deputy's salary.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-08, setting its annual deputy salary in the amount of $37.607.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
So deputy clerk and deputy treasurer, they get the salary here. How does it compare from last year? And what is this exactly?
By law, we have to have a, a deputy clerk and a deputy treasurer to stand in, um...
During elections, or?
Anytime, and if, if the clerk or the treasurer is not here or...
Absent, sick.
Absent.
In sick.
Close. Right.
Unleash.
They can step in and sign or do whatever they, they, you know, instead of the treasurer.
Okay.
And...
They have the full authority of everything we do, except for voting in meetings.
Yeah, they, they can't come to a meeting and vote. And by law, we have to have that, they gotta be bonded, which we do, and compensate them, so... And this is really duties above and beyond their normal, everyday job, what they're doing. Like Cindy has Janet as her, her...
Deputy.
Deputy, but she could, she doesn't have to appoint someone that works there, she could appoint anybody. But it just makes sense to appoint someone that's already here.
And also Shannon, you said, she appoint, who do you appoint?
Shannon, it would be, the other one is...
Kristi.
Kristi appoints?
Anita.
Okay.
As hers.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand.
Okay, so those are the deputies. Like we say, by state statute, we're required to have them. They don't have a supervisor deputy.
It's optional.
Yeah, it's optional. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
All right, next is our Resolution 2022-09, our Parks and Rec Coordinator's Salary, who is Cindy Babish.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-10 to set the annual Parks and Rec Coordinator's Salary.
Um, I believe it's 20...
2009, yeah, sorry, I got the next one up.
That's all right, so is that your motion, 09?
09 is my motion.
2009, we have motion and support, any discussion? I think Cindy does a heck of a job.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Nice video you did.
We get a lot of bang for the buck.
Oh, boy.
We get a lot of bang for the buck.
Oh, boy, so...
There's some good people around this, don't we?
Promoting it, so she, I saw your video online promoting, it was really nice.
Is that EWT? EBW.
Yeah, EBW TV.
It was a very, very nice interview.
Yep.
Yep, great job.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yep.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan. Cindy Valentine, yes.
All right, keep it rolling here. Next, we have Resolution 2022-10, set statutory, or salary for FOIA coordinator.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-10 to set the annual FOIA coordinator's salary.
Okay, we have motion and support. And I'll tell you, our FOIA business has been booming.
It's ridiculous.
It's, it's...
It's ridiculous.
It, it's...
It's nonstop.
It's nonstop, and it's stupid, I, I'm not afraid to say it, on some of these FOIAs that we get. We want to see everything on everything from this date and that date, and then when, when they tell them, oh, this is what it's gonna cost, or this is what it is, or they don't show up to get it, but by law, we have to do it. With the open books.
Open the books, yeah.
Yeah, open the book, we get a lot of them online from national organizations that we have to abide by, so... This is what our FOIA coordinator does, and that's money well earned, too.
Cindy does that, too?
Yep. There's a lot of training that goes along with that.
$3,000?
Yep. Any more discussion?
I think she's the right girl for the job.
Hearing none, roll call.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Cindy, I think. He's like, no. Yep. Okay, next we have Resolution 2022-11, set annual salaries for our trustees.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-11 to set the annual salary of the township trustees.
I was gonna say, I'll support it if... Okay, any discussion?
Well, I know there was an increase for us.
Actually, there isn't, is there?
Actually, we kept it the same.
Thought it was like 200 bucks or something, no?
I pulled it from, well, the budget amount was increased to cover special meetings, but the actual salary has not increased.
I just wanted to, you know, offer up if there was an increase toward the website and the live meetings and hiring Ray or somebody, because we didn't address that in the budget, which, you know, when the public was here, that's what we said we were gonna do, so... So somewhere, I'd like to see that addressed. Looking for some money somewhere. I would give my money to put toward it, so.
Okay, well, this is for...
Yeah, do we have motion?
We have motion and support.
We have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, twelve, set our meeting dates for our year of twenty-two and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, twelve, setting the meeting dates for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion?
I believe that we should look at the time. The six PM time has been requested to be pushed back. When I originally voted to change it to six, we were doing Zoom meetings. People were working from home. Now world is, you know, the world's back to people working. They can't get to the meetings. And I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no unless we move it to at least six-thirty. And that be, you know, we don't wanna appear as a self-serving board. We wanna appear that we're trying to help, make it convenient for them to come.
I understand.
I mean, six-thirty isn't too bad. It would give your folks at work here a chance to go get a bite to eat, come back. It's a compromise of not going to seven o'clock, which more of the other communities do. But I think we should budge a little bit and make it six-thirty.
Actually, I'd like to inform the board that Elgin Act just switched their meetings to six o'clock from seven o'clock.
The vast majority, though, and I listed them all for you before, are still at seven PM, including our own people and the planning commission and...
Okay, well, this motion would have to be turned down first before we could consider that.
They, um, and like I say, too, I get feedback from, uh, people that like the earlier time.
Well, I don't see them here, so. I know we got a lot more feedback of people wanting it at seven, so.
Okay.
It can be approved.
All right, so we have motion, or, uh, motion and support for the resolution at six o'clock, do we?
Yes.
Yes. All right, hearing that, any more discussion? Roll call.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
No.
One more.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Wow, that was quick. Board member comments. Cindy?
Um, absentee ballots, if you signed up for one and returned your application, should be going out by the end of the week. Hopefully, we don't have them yet, but we're supposed to have them, and we're supposed to be able to ship them out by Thursday. So they'll be coming in over the weekend if you requested one. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mark?
Uh, planning commission is on Wednesday at seven PM. Uh, we'll be just reviewing the, uh, field road special, uh, special property use, uh, storage container for Atkins Burger, uh, the Clay Township Zone Amendment. And just let everyone know, if you haven't known by now, the, uh, annual pickle tournament is kicking off on June thirtieth through July fourth, with parades and a full-blown, a lot, lot of excitement going on this year with the pickle tournament. Thank you.
That's for sure, thank you.
Mark, are they still, what are they auctioning off for their fundraiser this year? It used to be a boat, they don't do a boat anymore.
Well, we have, we have a customized golf cart. I can go into detail on it if you'd like, but, uh, it's a, it's a real beauty, so.
Okay. Thanks.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
And wanna help a blind kid buy a ticket for five bucks?
That's right, yep, absolutely. And thank you very much for allowing us to sell those tickets over there at the Rotary Club.
Yeah. Maureen?
Uh, we, I think we all received this. The trustee's an anonymous, um, code enforcement letter on cleaning up the mess at seven, three, four, four, Ed Lane. I just want to inform whoever turned this in that when you are anonymous, Shannon Murray puts your request to the bottom of the pile. I talked to him today, I contacted him. This is the eighth request, and I said, well, maybe it would be to the top of the pile by now, but, um, he's, you know, he wants you to say who you are. So a little bit concerning because he's, you know, he can work up to thirty hours a week, but his business is really busy, he said, so he's only working maybe ten hours. So hopefully, you know, we find someone else, um, the board. We talked about that in the budget workshop, so it's probably gonna happen. Yeah. Well, I want these people to know that's a board member comment, because I have to let them know that they sent this personally to us. I looked into it, that's the answer on it, so, um...
Also, on that property, the only violation that is on there right now, there's no blight on that property. There's four or five vehicles parked in front, and two of them have not, don't have tags. And I believe the letters have been gone out for them. One's a boat and one's a, a car.
Well, this says there's an abandoned camper, so I don't think we're supposed to park campers on the property, are we?
Right, that's what the letter says. Did you drive by?
But, yeah, I don't, I don't know, so.
Did you drive by?
I did not drive by.
Okay.
I just got this, so. Just wanted you to know, we looked into it. And let everybody know, the best thing to do if you're gonna turn in a complaint on blight is to not do it anonymously, put your name on it. Be a better chance of getting it worked on. Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Joanne?
Um, it feels good to almost be back to normal.
Yeah. What's normal?
Well, summer, and boating, and swimming, and partying, and all that good stuff, yeah. And we have a lot of new people on the island. That can always watch our meetings on TV. Or next door, or wherever it gets shown, wherever you put it on.
I don't think they're on TV, Joanne.
Well, technically, they, they can be on TV.
Yeah, that's not TV, they're not on TV.
I meant to say YouTube.
I love YouTube. All right, thank you.
Not so much TikTok, but YouTube.
Yeah, no TikTok. Chris?
What you got for us tonight, Chris?
Well, let me start by saying congratulations to the Elgin Act baseball and the Elgin Act softball programs. They both made deep runs in the state tournament. They came up a little bit short, uh, but they tried really hard, they played some great ball, and I'm really proud of those teams. They, uh, they made some long runs.
Parade's tomorrow.
The parade's tomorrow.
Yep, they're having a parade tomorrow, celebrating, uh, both, both teams. Uh, leaves the elementary school at five PM, goes down Smith, goes downtown Elgin Act, and ends up, uh, at, uh, on, um, Michigan Street, so.
Awesome.
Yep, there's a, a parade to, to welcome them.
And I apologize, what time did you say that started?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock tomorrow. Probably be dumb, it'd be a quick one.
Bring some candy to throw at them?
Yep.
Silly string or something?
Exactly.
All right.
Water balloons. It's gonna be hot.
It's gonna be really hot.
Congratulations to the young graduates. Another challenging year, um, a little bit easier than a couple of the years prior, but still not without its own challenges. And, um, I, I know a number of graduates this year, and they all have, um, really big dreams. So that, that's exciting when, when a young person has aspirations, and they know what they wanna do and where they wanna go and how they wanna get there. And that's always, uh, I don't know, it's, it's invigorating. It's, it's good that the, some of our younger generation have, have legitimate plans, goals, and, and ways to get there. I wanted to thank, uh, both Cindy, um, Babish, for doing what you do for us. I know that you're very busy over there, and you wear a lot of different hats. And I just wanna go on record to say that, how much I appreciate you and what you do for us. Okay? Sherry, I wanna say congratulations again for your, your assessment, uh, testing, and a hundred percent is no joke. That's, that's legit. That really speaks volumes to your professionalism, who you are, and, and how hard you train. So thank you. Lastly, together, um, through our last couple of budget meetings, we worked on some really good things. We spitballed some really good ideas. We've got a couple more years together as a board member, right, as, as a team. So there's been some things in the past that we talked about have not come to fruition yet that we need to work on. Um, and there was also some things discussed during our meeting that, that I'd like to keep the eye on prize for all of us. You know, we're, uh, I, I believe we're a very good functioning board, but I wanna function at a really high level for our last couple of years, so. Maybe we can find a way to work together and, and continue to elevate our game. That's all I have.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
All right, um...
You're gonna have to start writing that out for me, though, if you want me to...
I, I just like to, to bounce off a lot of people, they congratulated Cindy and every... And I, I had the past two weeks, probably four or five times when people came up to me, "Hey, Artie, I was in your office today, and so-and-so helped me out. Our, our staff here is incredible." They told, Anita did this, Sherry did this, um, Cindy did this. I mean, and, and it was fine, 'cause I, I was out with my fiancee, and three people came in a row, different people, I mean, boom, boom, boom. And Janice is like, "Oh, my gosh."